Well, apparently we're having technical difficulties again this morning, so we're gonna take a run at it. Call Ramsey County Meeting, Commission Meeting to order. Please rise for pledge.
I pledge. The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God into this world with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes were in your packets. Motion to approve or any changes?
I would move to approve the minutes.
Motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Approval of the bills?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the bills. Is there any discussion or questions? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of financial reports.
Move to approve.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the financial reports. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Treasurers' checks.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve Treasurers' checks. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried. Approval of the agenda. I have one thing to add. Due to the change over to Tyler Technologies, we haven't submitted our county abstract for tax purposes, so Beth was wondering if it would be prudent to extend Jim Mo's.
Steve Mo.
Steve Mo. Contract hits up today to the end of the month. Her meeting is August 2nd in Bismarck, so. That'll rate to add that. I got it under unfinished business.
I would move to approve the amended agenda.
Okay, anybody else have any amendments? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Roger, you're up. There you go.
Got a estimate here from Sticky Construction for recalling the north, south, and west sides of the building. Really started with the entire building, but it ran a little higher than expected. Both Thompsons and the Glass Shop here in town declined to give an estimate, so. So we do have for the, like I said, the three sides for seventy-two thousand six hundred dollars. And we got, when we do have rain, we do have some leaking on the west side, so I think it's important that we get this taken care of.
That was something that you had, you had figured that into your budget, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
We were hoping for the whole building.
Yes, but came in on, like I said, a little high. Considerably more than the last time.
Any questions for Roger?
When was the last time it was done? Ballpark.
Around two thousand?
Oh, so it's twenty-five years.
Yeah.
Okay.
Close to it anyway. And interesting, the guy who was here for Sticky Construction said he called this building in nineteen seventy-five. He said he was still in high school, but helped out.
Make a motion to go ahead and approve the cocking bid. Is it sticky?
Sticky, yeah.
I would second.
Motion and a second to approve the only bid we got from Sticky Construction to redo the north, south, west side of courthouse windows. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Thank you, Roger.
Thanks. Were we discussing the sound system, or is that the name?
No, we're gonna change up. You got some new information, so we're gonna reevaluate that. Water Resource District Board. Jeff got a quick note from.
I got a note from Board Chairman John Martinson. He said Water Board approved to bring the new Bree Snake and Clear proposed project to the County Commission. Will need to set up a public hearing. Approved a resolution, public comment for change based on our Centricode. New visitors, public comment period for public meetings. And then they approved their assessment dollar for Grand Harbor Assessment District at two fifty an acre and decreased Hammer Sullivan from one fifty per acre to seventy-five cents. And then the office manager will increase hours from thirty to thirty-five hours per week.
Okay. Sheriff Lang, you're up.
Morning. Here, I get an estimate for replacement of some body armor for four deputies and replacement of their carriers. And some extra pouches, tourniquet kits, radio pouches, etc., that hang on their vests that are getting wore, some were tore. The estimate come to seven thousand six hundred and eighty-nine dollars and two cents, which I have planned this in my budget. So I'm just looking for approval to go forward with this.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion and a second to approve the ordering of new armor replacement for four deputies. Is there any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
It's all ahead. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Sheriff. Jason, you're up.
Good morning, everybody. Just a couple of quick things with some dates for people to, so you guys are all in the loop. We sent out requests for quotes for the Free G Culvert site and Slade Horn projects. We mailed out the to list the local contractors, and then we also posted that in the journal. And I had asked Michelle to put it on the county webpage. And that's, they're all, the quotes are all due by July fourteenth at eleven a.m. So that's just an update on those two big culvert projects. Where we're at with those. Those are to be completed this year by October twenty-fifth. That's in the quote. Chip seal projects are tentatively scheduled to start July fourteenth. Talk to more seal code. Again, that's Ramsey County one, Walleye Drive, Military Road, Terminal Road. And I see Ramsey County asterisks on there, but anyway, that's Ramsey County eight from North Dakota. Twenty to Ramsey County three. The salt storage facility update leasing construction has contacted me and they intend on starting that around July seventh. Because we have an early deadline on that as well, so we can get the floor in it and the concrete apron on it and start getting salts and sand mixture stored. The next thing we have to look at is I would like to ask for a motion to change the responsible charge for Ramsey County from Kevin Fieldson to myself, Jason Craft. Today, July first, on all current and future federal aid projects. In your, in the agenda I sent in, I put a description of what the responsible charge is. Kevin is listed as our responsible charge, but.
Make the motion to change it from Kevin Fieldson to Jason Craft for the responsible charge.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried.
Next, we'll move to some bills that came in. The windows have been delivered to the shop, so we have that project we can get started on if we get some time. We need to pay Leon's Building Center two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents for the north windows. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay that.
I'll make that. So move. Second.
Motion and second to pay Leon Building Center for the windows, two thousand six hundred and sixty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Oh, we got, yeah, we got to roll call that one.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye.
Okay, so then we received a letter from the North Dakota DOT Financial Management Division. It's a bill for nine thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and five cents. For our local share of the nineteen point zero seven percent for engineering on the FHWA projects, FEMA projects, four B, nine B, ten, and Courier Road South, all the culvert installs. So that's our local share for the.
So this is the local share to free hatchet too, or just for the culvert part?
For the projects, yeah. So it'd be for everything.
Hey, make that motion.
This is just the engineering share.
But this is the, you want this motion for the nine thousand?
Yep.
I'll make that motion for nine thousand three hundred and ninety-eight oh five.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the DOT Management Division nine thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars and five cents for a local share of the engineering portion. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Okay, then next moving on, we have invoice from True North Steel to pay for seventy-four thousand twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents. I broke that down for you. The resale inventory that we keep on stock in the yard is fifty-two thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and forty cents of that. And then on the waterboard replacement culverts, we ordered those for up, up north. They had requested those with Kevin. They are twenty-one thousand seven hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty cents. So that gives us that total of seventy-four thousand twenty-five forty-two. So I'd like to entertain a motion to pay True North Steel.
I'd move to approve the page to North.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay True North seventy-four thousand twenty-five dollars and forty-two cents for inventory replacement. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried.
Last bill we have to cover is Paulson Gravel finished, the gravel project on the Ramsey County Nelson County line. That was a, that was a FEMA, twenty-twenty-two FEMA funded project yet. So that invoice is for fourteen thousand three hundred dollars. That was actually a bid, a bid project this year, so I broke that again. FEMA would be covering twelve thousand one hundred and fifty-five dollars, and our local share will be two thousand three hundred and forty-five dollars of that, so. We've already been, we've already been reimbursed for that money. That money is already here. We just have to make the transfer and pay the bill.
So move the paid at twenty-three forty-five.
Second.
Need a motion to pay.
Pay it all. Fourteen-three.
Fourteen thousand three hundred.
We have to transfer.
A refund. Okay.
Yeah.
I'll motion to, switch my motion to fourteen-three.
Jeff, you're still good with the second?
I'm still good with the second.
Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis.
Aye.
Frith.
Aye.
Volk.
Aye.
Wilhelmie.
Aye.
Gessner.
Aye. Motion carried.
And then lastly, I didn't have on the agenda, but I just forgot to get it on there, but tomorrow is the engineering deadline required by the state for the, those FHWA projects, those FEMA projects from twenty-twenty-two. So we have received one so far at our office, so that July second is the deadline for that, so then we'll be able to get our committee together.
Paul, do you have anything with the projects going on that you need to share or add that I've missed?
On those ER projects, Blaine just emailed me back yesterday and said they're planning on starting August eleventh. And do Ramsey County ten first, because that one has an early completion date. And then go to Prairie, then County four, and then finish up on County nine. So now that project has to be completed by October eighteenth.
Perfect. Anybody have anything for me?
I did that question.
Yes.
I signed an invoice. Today it said rake wheel cream.
Signed what? No. Rake. Oh, rake.
Cream.
Okay, yeah, cream colored rake wheels for the motor grader rakes. The hay rakes on the front of the machines.
Right, I know what it looks like, but what's cream?
No, it's just the color.
Oh.
They're not white. They're like a tan color. I'm assuming that's the, the cream color, I'm guessing. I don't know, but yeah, no, that's what they're for, so. Yeah, they work well. What's that? Oh, yes. Thanks, Candy. We, we found a very promising last position candidate down at the shop yesterday. We had, we interviewed with him. He interviewed well. He's moving here from from out of the area into town. He's already here, actually. I have reached out to Global Testing about going forward with the drug testing, drug screening that we have to do. We'll have to get a background check, and I'm assuming since we're not, we're in limbo with HR Candy and I can make this happen, or probably want to do that. Because I like to get them on board as soon as we can.
Well, actually, we have a HR consultant, so between you and Candy.
Oh, today they're on?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so. That's, that's good.
Time.
Yeah, just in time, so we can try to get it done as fast as we can.
Yep.
Because I like to bring them on in the middle of the month if we can, possibly.
Okay.
Yep. So we get that extra CDL driver and stuff. All right, thanks, Candy. All right, thank you, guys.
Moving on to unfinished business, lease with your abstract office. Is that you, Megan?
I spoke with Daniel about this issue yesterday, and he said that he was still waiting for some information to finish up the lease. He has a draft, but he does not have it fully completed.
Okay, all right. Moving on, the letter to the governor. There's one in your packet, and I believe Jeff emailed a couple other options. Open that up for discussion. I guess I kind of like Jeff's third option there. It was short and to the point, probably more so than the one I wrote. Any other opinions?
Yeah, I liked the different elements of both the first and the third one of Jeff's head sent over. So I don't know if there's, it's worth trying to.
I, I, I don't think so. I think this, I think the third one covers. We're, we're trying to ask him to come here and that.
Yeah.
I think the third one covered it.
I think maybe working with Michelle to can drop some pinpoints of where some inundated lands would be to look at in case they do a fly through instead of, because some of that information is inaccessible via roads.
Right.
So that may be an option too to, to highlight some of the areas that have been heavily impacted by that situation and put some drop pins on our GPS coordinates or something for Governor to take a look at. To get on with that.
Okay. Is there a motion to for me to go ahead and sign that? I'd like everybody to sign it, I guess, if we can. Go ahead and get that ready to go.
I would show.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Blaine, seconds. Any other discussion?
Only, the only thing that I would have, and it's not substance wise within the letter, but more so like formatting wise, rather than putting any coordinates or anything like that within the body of the letter, I would just say at the end of the letter, please see the attachment and attach it as a a second page, just so that you don't mess with the substance of the letter.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. North Dakota Standing Committees for the Association. I don't have the time to stand on any of those committees. Is there any volunteers?
And even though retired, I don't have time either.
So they're asking across the state, right? This isn't just from Ramsey County.
Right.
Right.
So all fifty-three counties are get the same thing.
And it's for a certain number of members, right? There's not fifty-three slots, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I also do.
Okay.
It's busy work. I did it once. Busy. I think there was four meetings, but one of them you have to go to Bismarck for, I believe, if I remember right. It's time, you know. I don't have the time either right now. We're, we're in the process at work. I just don't have it.
Do you have any inklings to do so, Jeff, or we could, okay. We won't be sending anybody then, or submitting any names. Then to the Steve Mo contract, I kind of described it there at the beginning, but with the change over to Tyler Technologies, Steve had his own program that he wrote to consolidate some of that information. So with the change over to Tyler Technologies, there's some rough patches here we're gonna have to go through. And just to make sure that we get it done, the deadline was yesterday. We've got somewhat of an extension, not a real solid extension, but we're not in, we're not in this boat all by ourselves. There's other counties that are switching over to this new program that are also having trouble, so is there any discussion on extending Steve's contract? I would think till the end of the month should be suffice.
Steve is on board with this?
I assume he was. That's what I got from the he's not, or he, I, I think he is from what Beth has been talking to.
Okay. Because I would make the motion to extend Steve Mo's contract for another month.
There's motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? You gotta love technology or program transfers or nothing but a pain in the butt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Any other unfinished business? New business, Homestead Credit Approval. Got one of those in packet.
Yep, so move.
Motion and a second to approve the Homestead Credit. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carried. Visitors and delegations, anybody like to speak today? Portfolios and announcements. Grand opening went well at the Western State Bank Event Center. I think there's a lot of extra people there that normally don't come out just to see the building. I've been telling everybody it's, it's really a great facility, and now we just gotta make a couple of payments before I let my enthusiasm get away from me. I don't have any announcements other than that, I guess.
I got one. Ramsey County Air Rifle Team recently competed last week at the National Shoot, and my granddaughter ended up in eighth place overall in that competition with about ninety kids. And the team took third overall, so did very, very well.
Congratulations to those young people. That's, that's good to hear. Any other announcements from?
I'd like to thank Jason for clarifying the jail stuff in the paper. And another thing is, I guess there's, I feel there's some confusion out there in the public. I'd like them to know that the vote for the tax is not for Ramsey County Jail. It is for the city, because there's some confusion that it's for a new jail. That is not what it's for, so people know.
Okay.
It's for the city.
Yeah, go ahead, Garland.
Garland Oisted from previously Degrove County. But I was kind of, I've just been looking through some things. Do you realize that from nineteen ninety to two thousand and ten, the county lost about twelve hundred residents? And looking at a little farther, I could see that Devil's Lake lost six hundred residents during that time period. And Church and Fairy, they disappeared, so went from a hundred and nineteen, I think, down to seven. But that leaves five hundred, five hundred people, and I would probably think that are the people that were dislocated within the rural areas from the floodwater. But anyway, these heirs from the landowners out there still have a vested interest in the farmland. But they really have no way, they can hear the county commission meetings, but the water board that deals with waters within our area, we have no way of really keeping track of that, so we're wondering meetings of the water board and the county commission are routinely scheduled at overlapping times, making it impossible for both attend the proceedings in their entirety. County Commission meetings are live streamed and recorded online by owners by, to review by owners and heirs regardless of where they reside. According, county commission meetings also contain closed captions for viewers with hearing impairments, which is somebody like me. I listened to you guys today now. I can pick up some of it, but again, water board, I have no chance. But we're kind of wondering, we have the equipment here in the county commission room. Why can't the water board meet here at a, well, maybe a week difference in time? And have their meetings recorded and closed captioned? So if a farmer, like Martinson, had to leave because he was going out to do fieldwork. A lot of farmers are doing it right now, but they could do it in the evenings or rainy day or whatever, but look and see what has occurred during that time. I just think that we have the equipment, we have the room. I just think that we have the equipment, we have the room. I think it would be pretty easy to do.
Okay.
I don't see a downside on it.
Okay, I think that's something we can talk to Michelle about and talk to the water board about, I guess. See what they think, that.
I don't see a downside.
Yeah.
I don't know if it's entirely necessary. I mean, all the meetings are public and open to the public to attend. Um, all our meeting minutes are published online as well as theirs. Um, and it's certainly not required by North Dakota Central Code that we do that. Um, you know, I think there is ample opportunity for a public to attend, not only our meetings, but the water board's meetings. And we purposely asked the water board years ago to reschedule their meetings to coincide with ours on the first Tuesday in the month. So they can be able to provide us with an update.
Okay.
Now, if we change their dates to a different day, then it would require somebody um from their board to come in and make a special trip, um yeah, to provide an update um to the county commission, and whether or not that's important or not, I'm not sure, but. Um. I do think there's other avenues for the water board where they, where they meet and how they, they do it, um. Be entirely up to them, I would think.
You have the reins, though. You, you can tell the water board what to do. And today, Martinson handed you a sheet of paper telling you what had occurred. And if I go online, I will see a few lines about what their decision was, but I have no way of knowing what the rationale was to come to that decision. And I don't know why people shouldn't, in the light of transparency, why wouldn't that be available? For everyone. We have the equipment, we have the facilities, everything.
But that would have to be.
A pretty minor adjustment.
It would have to be, I mean, the water board would have to agree to it, so I think we can bring it up to them and, and have the discussion and, and and go with that, I think, would be. Proper, proper in my mind, maybe not. I mean, I realize, you know, not required and, um.
County Commission doing it, the legislators are doing it.
Yeah, um. But we'll have to look into them.
Your township doing it?
Yeah, you tell me.
If we're gonna open up doors, let's open up.
I'm sure they would. I'm sure they would.
Yeah. You know, that's the grassroots of, of government is townships, but they're probably one of the most secretive organizations you can possibly be a part of.
Hundred percent agree. Almost all the townships are over lunch when a person can't get to them. I, I brought that up several times to our township, and it's always at lunchtime. I'm like, really? Who can get to these meetings and the townships to me is somewhat even more important than this. You know, we base a lot of our stuff off of what's going on in the townships and we can't even get them together, then sign pieces of paper, how long it took for them to do the agreement that we had to do.
Oh, with the flood stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't think there's a hundred percent answer for everything. I mean, I'm not saying that it's not something that's doable.
But it easier to do it than not do it?
I mean, I don't think that the minutes are not posted.
The minutes are posted, but if you look at them and try to find any information about it, you'll see a one-line item that this was approved, but you don't hear any of the rationale that goes in with it. It is like, you look at the, what was it, bill that gets passed the legislation? You can go back and listen to the rationale in it, and that's what the Attorney General does when he determines whether the law is being followed. Why wouldn't it be that? It doesn't seem like it's a big burden on anybody. Unless they don't, they don't want us to hear what the rationale is.
I don't know, I think all meetings, if there's some, even this meeting. There's something that the people want to address, even having it online, it's not like we can talk to each other online.
Right.
If they really wanted to address something, they should come to the meeting.
But you can't, like my part, I can't hear the meeting. The difficulty here.
I'm tracking what you're saying. Your, your concern is more to have. So what's, uh, what do you call it, the characters?
So that you can, uh.
Close caption.
Close caption.
Well, so the, yeah, but even the people that have moved away, they still have a vested interest in this. But they have no way of knowing it. They live a thousand miles away.
Well, I, I guess, somebody a thousand miles away isn't voting within the confines of Ramsey County. Um, and we're here to represent Ramsey County residents.
Okay.
I see both, I'm, I'm, I see both sides of it.
There, there is arguments for both sides.
Yeah, I, I see both sides.
I, I think the water boards have been under strict scrutiny by the legislature over the past several years on regarding their me- meetings being publicized, um in advance, their meetings being um posted to their website and, um, within a ten-day time period. Nobody else does that for any other organization than water boards. Um, so I think being, as far as them being transparent and open to the public, I think they're probably one of the more open and transparent organizations that we have. Oh, we may disagree with that, and that's your prerogative.
No, no, but it's like, I went to Vlade and Cooley, snagging clear that we had a while back. And I didn't realize that Martin said at the end of that meeting, well, everybody's water goes somewhere. And that's not exactly true, and I would have challenged him on that had I known what he said. And somebody said, they asked him, well, like when he opened up the Ramsey County Water Resource Board, their first thing that said, a board showing couriers all landlords to retain water on the land to maximum extent possible. But somebody had asked Martinson if he, if the board ever does that, the people would come in for any private, and he said, I would, but I feel uncomfortable doing that.
Hey, Garland, you served on the water board for several years. Did you ever encourage anybody to retain water?
We did.
Um, you know, that, that's a, there, there's private property rights and people have, if they have that drain established through their property. Hey, um, they have the right to obligate and, and fulfill that drain. Um, whether it be a natural drain or a permitted drain, they have the obligation and the right to go ahead and maintain that.
Okay, we're getting off subject here. The subject was to see if we can, um. Let the water board use this room, so I think what we're gonna do is we'll bring it up with the water board. Um, they're following the law as it is. This would be, uh, an added benefit, if you will. Um, to that, and it's gonna be basically up to them if they want to do that. Um, we can present Garland's arguments and, and we'll have to go from there. That's about all I can, I mean, we can't force them to do it by any means.
Even if they just wanted to record it and put it on, it doesn't probably have to be a live stream.
Right, yeah, even if they want to just record it, that would be something. Um. That's what, what we could do.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Uh. Commissioner Volk, when he brought up the, the jail thing, I do have one other announcement. Um. We volunteered for this job as commissioners. We had to submit uh petitions and get elected, and the people who work in this or work for the county, um, are doing that by choice. I think we all understand that being in a government situation. We all get our butts chewed probably a little more often than we should about things that people don't quite understand. But I would like it, make it perfectly clear that when that crosses the line into personal insults, um. No employee, I don't care if it's the new guy you're trying to hire for the blade or the janitor or the lowest paid secretary in this building, or if it's a county official. Um. I don't know if I'm gonna put out an email to all employees or, or how I should do this, but I do not tolerate it going from talking about an issue to a personal insult or any crossing of that line whatsoever. I would encourage if anybody has that happen to them, they ask the person to leave the courthouse or the shop or wherever you're at, and if they don't, then law enforcement should be called and they should be escorted out. Um, I will not tolerate that. It is part of our social problem right now, and I don't expect, there's nobody that gets paid enough in this building to stand there and have their personal integrity insulted. And I just wanted to make that perfectly clear. If anybody wants to throw anything else in there, please feel free, but, um, there was an incident here last Friday that is not acceptable.
And I would encourage citizens that have that type of an issue to come talk to us.
Yeah.
And you know, don't take it out on our employees. We will not tolerate that.
Yeah.
It's unacceptable, and I hundred percent agree that it's, there's no place for that in this work environment.
Yeah, I mean, this is, you know, sometimes it's just a misunderstanding that there's state law we're following, you know? And, and once you explain it to them, people seem to understand that, but like I said, when that flagrantly crosses the line. Um. It, it's not acceptable. I don't care, I'm, I mean. In any interaction with a human being, I mean, I've lost my temper, but I don't know that I've ever tried, made it personal. If I have, then shame on me, but definitely in this building. Anything else for the good of the order?
Hey, bringing up jail, we will have a jail or law enforcement center budget meeting. Um, that's something that's been kind of nagging on us with the changes in the legislature and all the different funding mechanisms that the state, uh, threw on us, that the law enforcement center is a little behind on our budget, so I think we'll do a, a special meeting, we're hoping for next Tuesday, uh, the eighth for the budget for the law enforcement center. Hey, if we don't get it done, candy will be pounding on us, and she has every right to do so. Um, as a political subdivision, we're supposed to have that in July one, and that's today. And so I would apologize to her and the other county auditors and commissions within the Lake Region Law Enforcement Center that we will get that done as soon as we possibly can. Um, law enforcement center, we, yes, we are considering a new law enforcement center. It's something that's been discussed for, I think, a couple of years now. We've been researching and we will bring that forward, um, and start having public meetings addressing that, discussing that. Showing people what we have in mind and the plans that we have for it, um, in the near future. And but we're looking at if a special bond is needed, and I do believe that it will be, um, probably June ninth of next year, so the time will be of the essence to meet that deadline and making sure that public is aware of what we're asking for, why we're asking for it, and exactly what it's gonna cost us. Um, but our law enforcement center has, uh, run its course of life and we need to upgrade and enhance that facility for the safety of our community, the employees that work there and the people that we hose there to keep our public safe, so, um, we will be doing that. And I think, uh, a primary election would be the, the best bet, at least for now, but we haven't completely made that decision. Um. On the airport front, uh, we started our round-trip flights to, uh, Denver uh, last week on the twenty-sixth, I think, was the first day, so there's no more stops in Jamestown. And we look for boardings to increase with that aspect. I know I went out to the event center a couple of times over the weekend and the airport parking lot was full, so we're, uh, excited for that news that we have a, a non-stop flight to and from Ja- or to and from Denver on a daily basis, so. Encourage people to, uh, utilize Devil's Lake Airport for their travel needs. Other than that, uh, we do have our state water convention, um, summer conference that will be happening at the Spear Lake Casino July ninth and tenth, um. And water leaders from across the state will be meeting at the casino, uh, first time we've ever hosted that meeting here in Devil's Lake, and we're looking forward to that. We'll have a tour on the tenth and we'll be, uh, taking up, uh, tourist stops throughout the area with a busload, if not two busloads of dignitaries July tenth, yep. And I think one of the, the highlights that, and people really like is Camp Crafton. The, we could spend the entire day out there and, and still not cover all the, um, coolness that happens out at Camp Crafton. I know Commissioner Volk works out there, so he probably doesn't think it's quite as cool, but I, I, I really appreciate everything they do out there, and Richie Slu, the development of that out there will be a uh, training engineering facility for amphibious, uh, vehicles and amphibious uh assault teams and everything else that goes along with it. It's one of two in the country, I believe.
Right. Yeah.
So that's just one of the many stops that we'll have on the water tour this year is, is seeing the enhancements of the, um, amphibious training facility at, at Camp Crafton and, and, uh, along with stops out at the East End Outlet, um. Seeing the, the amount of horsepower that those, um, pumps are capable of is pretty impressive. I think there's four twelve-hundred-and-fifty horsepower pumps and one nine-hundred horsepower pump that when they're all operating, it's, it's, uh, it's a pretty impressive feature. You know, it's a ninety-six inch diameter pipe that runs five and a half miles from the East End intake over to the Tonicouli control structure where it uh, falls into the Tonicouli and, um. Yeah, a lot of, a lot of good stops on our tour this year, so. It'll be quick, though. We start at ten o'clock on the tenth out at the Spear Lake Casino. Have people back in town or back to the casino by four thirty-five o'clock that day so they can continue their travels, those that traveled in from out of town.
Thank you. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Oh, yeah, Roger. If you want to.
Both with Michelle and, um, the one estimate from HB Sound and Light for the twenty-eight forty-four, she said she sees no reason not to go with that.
Okay.
So.
There, so you want to explain what we're dating there?
We're gonna be going from, our existing system has one base and you can only use the headset or the um, um.
Hand mic.
Microphone. Uh, cordless mic, thank you. Um, one at a time, not both. But with this, the twenty-eight hundred dollar will have two bases and we can use both at the same time.
Okay.
That's the upgrade.
And that was two thousand?
Uh, twenty-eight hundred and forty-four dollars and twenty-three cents.
So you need a motion to go ahead and start that process? Is that?
Or just go ahead and purchase it?
Well, whatever, I guess, whatever you, whatever the motion is. Well, whatever, I guess, whatever you, whatever the motion is such, I guess.
Both people, like if you have somebody in the audience that wanted to use the cordless mic and your presenter could still have their headset mic on, you could both talk at the same time. And right now we can't do that, it has to be one or the other.
Good, second, motion and second, go ahead and purchase the update for the sound system, uh, roll call, sorry, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Otis. Brett.
Hi.
Volk.
Hi.
Wilhelmie.
Hi.
Gessner.
Hi. Uh, okay.
Alright, thanks.
Yep, thank you Roger.
One last thing, uh, sure if, uh, you wanted, uh, toot your guys' horn about the K nine training that was. Here in Devil's Lake and the exhibit that you guys put on on the evening of the nineteenth, I think that was pretty, pretty cool.
Uh, last week, uh, we had K nine of the north. Uh, actually it was the trainer that our dog came from was down. Uh, we had people from Bismarck. Of course, our local dogs around here, some other people throughout the state that brought their dogs and it was a week long training. Uh, they did a demonstration on their last day here. Um. It's pretty impressive to see how consistent the dogs are from different trainers, different handlers. And, uh, ours performed very well.
Yeah, I was extremely impressed with all the dogs and certainly expressed, especially impressed with ours, so job well done. So thank you for bringing that team in.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.
Yeah.
Running here, running there.